Board of Trustees for Little Elm ISD held today, January, uh, June 16th, 2004, beginning at 6:30 PM. And the Little Elm High School Lecture Hall is now called to order. Call order session in the lecture hall.
Mr. Christopher Williams?
Here.
Mr. Pedro Vegas?
Yes.
Ms. Leanna Hart? Mr. Deliana English?
Here.
Assistant Lieutenant White?
Here.
Mr. Alejandro Torres?
Present.
And Lisa Myers, here. An absent Miss Stephanie Gray.
First order of business, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas, I pledge allegiance to these taxes, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Next item on agenda. I would like to, as citizen input, I would like to wish and extend a warm welcome to everyone that's present at the regular meeting, June 16th, today, of the Board of Trustees' Board. As all items discussed, vote on this evening have been posted as required by Texas law. Please keep in mind, this meeting is of the Board held in public, not a public meeting. We thank you for joining us this evening. All items have previously been discussed at a board agenda held one week prior. As we do move on to citizen input, there are a couple of rules that we have in place. I would like to share with you just in case anyone is unfamiliar with the rules. Any person wishing to address the Little Elm ISD Board of Trustees during the period reserved for public comment at the board meeting must sign up to be held in accordance with policy VED Local. It stipulates, at regular meetings, the Board shall allot time to hear persons who desire to make comments to the purpose of the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall sign up with the presiding officer or designated before the meeting began and shall indicate the topic of which they wish to speak. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. Delegation of more than three persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board. No response should be given during the public comments portion of a regular board meeting. The Board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subjects that are not included on the agenda posted in the notice of meeting. The Board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience in the eye after at least one warning from the presiding officer. Any person continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the person removed from the meeting. This comment period is not intended for a facilitation of complaints. The Board will only consider complaints that remain unresolved after they have been addressed through proper administrative channels and they have been placed in the Board's agenda. For further information, please contact the Little Elm ISD Superintendent Office by calling your number. Brayden Robbins will be on behalf of Joshua Warrior, as well as Stephen Walsh, we sure have that name right, and Dominique Quintez, and Brayden, Mr. Brayden? Robbins?
I am here to speak on behalf of Joe Corley, or to me, Coach Joe. Coach Joe is a wonderful coach. He not only cares about coaching, as in sports, he cares about career grades, he's special to the family. Coach Joe helped us, helped us a lot, work things in school and in life. What I am trying to say is Coach, about everyone before he thinks about himself. Um, I've known him almost my whole life. He has taught me so many things, not just about sports, but he has taught me about life and he has given me, taught me a challenge at school. During the school year, he tutored kids after school on his own time. He has helped me and our community with reading and math. He's also permitted me for the star test this year and helped me pass since grade. But what I've learned from Coach Joe is that you should never give up, whether it's in school or in a basketball game. All you need to do to succeed in life and in school is to try your best at the parties. So to conclude, Coach Joe helps all ages of kids to succeed in life, school, and spouse. I hope that you allow Mr. Joe Corley to be a part of your school district because he is a great asset. Thank you for your time and have a great, good year.
Next up, Ms. Lori Dory. Topic is supporting principals of Little Elm ISD.
My name is Lori Dory. First, I would like to thank you for your service to our district. I can only imagine the challenging role you have as you work to make decisions that lead and direct the future of LEISD and impact thousands of students. I know you do not take this role lightly and you are a board that values the input of students, staff, parents, and community. I come to you tonight as a parent of two LEISD students, one who just graduated in the class of 2014 and one who will be a junior next year. As a resident of Little Elm for almost 14 years, there have been many bumps and bruises throughout the years my children have been in the district. The rapid growth and change have been felt and far too many times I've been told to be patient as the district works to catch up. As a former teacher and administrator in the district for five years, I fully understand these challenges and particularly the issue of consistency in staffing. I'm extremely saddened to hear that the district has lost Mr. Ron Sterling, Associate Principal of LEHS. While Mr. Sterling is greatly deserving of this advancement in his career, the students of LEHS are already missing his presence and the relationship they have with him. This evident in comments posted on social media such as, yes, I'll be moving to Sunnyvale for my senior year. This brings me to my reason for speaking to you tonight. I am here to express my highest support and respect for Mr. Shawn Joseph and his leadership at LEHS. I know that far too often Board members only hear from parents when we are upset about something. I want to share with you that having been patient, I have finally seen results in my children's education. Mr. Joseph heard from me more times than I can count during his first year in LEHS. He earned my respect as I saw him as a man of action and a leader who truly acts in the best interest of students. I came to him with concerns about grading, the creative and AP retesting policy, curriculum, semester exam percentages, and I could go on and on. In every situation, I saw actions that showed me he is here for kids. They are his beginning and ending of every decision. As an educator, parent, member of the LEHS Building Leadership Team, and former employee of LEISD and LEHS, I believe that Mr. Shawn Joseph and the current leadership at LEHS is the best this district has ever had. I hope this word will express to him and his staff your 100% support of his leadership and direction of the students. Put an end to political rumors that only cause unrest and dissension in our district. Our district not only needs consistency in the leadership roles at LEHS, but we need the continued vision and commitment of Mr. Joseph and his staff.
Thirty seconds.
I'm tired of watching this district start over just about every time there's progress. It's time to finish for the sake of our kids. I respectfully urge the Board to support the students and provide them the stability and continued progress they've come to know in the last two years. Let them see in your actions your faith and support of Mr. Joseph and his administrative team. Thank you for your time.
Move on to the next agenda item. Superintendent's report.
We have a special guest with us tonight, Tamara Ringo of the Coppell Independent School District. She's the Director of Communications and Public Relations, and she has a special presentation for one of our staff members.
Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes of your time and thank you for attending this meeting and giving your support to your Board. My name is Tamara Ringo, the Director of Communications and Public Relations for Coppell Independent School District, delivered to the South a little bit. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about someone that's in your presence that's here probably 24/7. That's kind of the nature of the beast and the job that we work. Her name is Julie Swor. She's your Director of Communications and Public Relations. She's also a friend and colleague of mine, and she's our Vice President of the Southwestern Region for the National School of Public Relations Association. I'll just, I'm going to read you a little quick synopsis of what happened in May a year ago. Four good friends and peers packed their bags and drove north last May during Memorial Day weekend. It was a trip that forever changed their lives and many others, earning them the President's Award for Outstanding Service by the Texas School of Public Relations Association. The four public school communication veterans from North Texas, long trained in helping their own respective districts, rallied to the city of one outside the state. Julie Swor of Little Elm Independent School District, Angela Shelley of Carrollton Farmers' Branch ISD, Julie Phantom of Carroll ISD, and Tamara Ringo of Coppell, joined forces to help more public schools following the devastation left by an EF5 tornado. The tornado ripped through the town, killing 24, and left the school district decimated by family tragedies and destruction of school buildings. More public schools, which did not have an employee dedicated to public relations, y'all have to bear with me if I get a little emotional about this, it's tough, did not have an employee dedicated to public relations, and they needed help. It needed a plan, it needed support. The experience and selfless act of kindness and compassion by these four women helped ease some of the communication stress and the workload. Swor, Shelley, Phantom, and Ringo provided their helping hands and years of experience handling tragedies in their own districts, but none that matched this. Because of compassion, helplessness and dedication, helpfulness and dedication, TSP President Patty Pollock-Paralis honored them in March this year with the award, with the President's Award in the State Conference in Austin. School communications professionals are wired to respond in times of need, no matter what the situation. That was a quote from Julie Swor. Traveling to Moore, Oklahoma and assisting the Oaksboro, Oklahoma School Public Relations Association chapter was one of the most inspiring experiences I've ever had in my career, and getting to experience it alongside three of my peers was very rewarding. The group assisted Oaksboro and the National School of Public Relations Association teams at the Command Center for more public schools. Swor, Shelley, Phantom, and Ringo came to the aid of school employees, giving them needed breaks to help deal with their own losses. The North Texas team arrived five days after the tornado hit Moore, which is located 10 miles south of Oklahoma City. They worked out of a school library and helped communicate by setting up social media sites, electronic newsletters, and press conferences. Also, the team took pictures to help document the horrific destruction at Briarwood Elementary and Plaza Towers Elementary. Both schools were beyond repair and were, both were eventually demolished. The impact of the trip will be memorable for those who offered help in more time of, in more time of need. Pascal Gonzalez, Executive Director of Communications at Northside ISD in San Antonio, Texas, presented the award at the state luncheon this year. Certainly, what these school PR pros did was an act of kindness and courage, Gonzalez said. They saw a need, they were compelled to act, and they did. They represent the best of TSP. And we've all gotten our awards because Julie spent the last three months making sure that she came to each one of our school board meetings to make sure they were all recognized as a part of that team. So I really was not going to let one more month go by with you guys giving us a few minutes of your time, I appreciate that, without saying thank you to Julie personally and professionally and letting you all know what a tremendous impact she had and for the work that she did on helping in that situation. So I just, here's the award that she received. It's been 10 years since this award's been given as the President's Award for the Texas School of Public Relations Association.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you to the Board for allowing this to happen. Thank you for the Superintendent for giving me the support to take those days. I know from your own personal tragedies, even with the hurricane in Galveston, when I asked if she thought I should go, she said absolutely and take as much time as you need. It was very much a blessing and very much, very impactful on all of our lives. But I also want to point out that I could not have done it without this Board and this administrative team's support. As you know, many of us, we believe in paying it forward, and so it was just so compelling that should a tragedy ever befall our community or our school system, it's very comforting to know that I have colleagues and many other fellow educators around the state and in other states that we give a call on for this type of assistance. It was an honor to be there and thank you for allowing me to.
You're very kind.
Some tense, pretty quick, an update, construction update.
One of the Board members has asked for an Avid overview and presentation, and we're going to do part of that tonight, and then Dr. Porter will explain the other part.
Good evening. This evening, I'd like to present a little bit of information about Avid and LEISD. This first portion is practically an overview of the program as it exists across the state and across the nation, list of demographic participation information at the end. In July, Tasha Todd Sheehan, who is our College or Career Readiness Coordinator, will come to you and present a more robust presentation about the specifics of Avid in LEISD. But we wanted to make sure that you're aware of the program component as we see it as a critical piece of what we do here in our district to promote students being college and career ready and prepared. The mission of Avid is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. It includes a school-wide approach, it is focused on college preparation, it is an extensive support structure that's for typically low-income or underserved students, and it includes professional development for educators. These demographics are for 2013 Avid seniors across the nation. 69% of those Avid seniors qualify for the free and reduced lunch program, which is an additional indicator of the emphasis on students living at low-income or poverty levels. As you see here, the parent's highest level of education for Avid seniors in 2013 is in this purple region, which says high school graduate, meaning that the parents of most of the Avid students are not college-going adults themselves or had not attended college. And then you see by and large the ethnicity of students who are 2013 Avid seniors who are Hispanic. The Avid program is an elective that students take, and the students who take the Avid elective have average to high test scores, they have a GPA between 2 to 3.5, they have college potential with support. Basically, the student that we want in the Avid elective is the student who has the skills, the abilities, and the capability or the potential, but who may or may not have the support from parents or other support structures that will promote a college-going, a college-going culture. Why does Avid work? It places Avid students in rigorous curriculum and gives them support to achieve. It provides the explicit hidden curriculum of schools. Parents who have a high achievement or high attainment of academic success teach that hidden curriculum to their students, and students who do not have the benefit of having parents or support structures in place, their students are not aware of navigating the school system to the highest level, and so the Avid program intentionally teaches those the pieces. It provides a team of students for positive peer identification and redefines the teacher's role as that of student advocate. In LEISD, we have, you see the number of students who have been enrolled within the last three years of Little Elm High School. We have had a teacher change. We've lost one of our teachers who was very, very influential and popular amongst our students, so you see a little bit of a dip in the Avid enrollment there for the high school as we revitalize that program and get additional staff there. And then our Lakeside Middle School Avid program, we have seen that program become more and more robust as we've gone from one Avid elective teacher to one per-grade level, and specifically expanding to the sixth-grade Avid program, and we thank Mr. Winkler for his support at the middle school level. As I said previously, Ms. Todd Sheehan will be back to visit with you in July about a variety of indicators related to the Avid program of Little Elm ISD.
Do we know what the enrollment is for next year for Avid?
Was that not on the slide? Was it on? It's increased over each of those numbers, so that's not finalized at this time, but we can present that to you as soon as the first day of school happens.
We'll see more at the next presentation on some of the other things that they've done, like visits.
Absolutely, absolutely. Ms. Sheehan is at a, at a national career conference this week, so we wanted to give you information, but at the same time, she is our Avid expert, and I wanted her to have the opportunity to visit with you about the many pieces that she has implemented during her tenure here, and so she'll be back in July and we'll present that to you.
They said there was a change in teacher. Do we have the same teacher for next year?
For the middle school, as my knowledge, yes. For the high school program, as you can see, there's a note there, Mr. Gene Thompson has been in our high school for, I think, two years now, and he's been consistently involved with the Avid program from the academic content side, and he had asked himself if he could be the Avid elective teacher, and he's participated in a ton of training, has great relationships with students, and he's going to be our Avid elective teacher at the high school next year.
And Board?
Yes.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I believe the next item is also mine, that's why I continue to stand.
Community stake.
Okay. Community and student engagement. As you are aware, as I mentioned in previous board meetings, House School 5 added an additional evaluation component in addition to state assessments that are provided, and that's a community and student engagement rating. There are nine areas of, nine indicators that are assessed in this particular evaluation system, and each district across the state and each campus will rate themselves on these nine indicators. You develop your own rubric at the district, and our district's process was to bring at least three experts covering each of these fields together to develop the rubrics, and then we worked with a different community stakeholder group to actually analyze the data and apply the rubric to what we have to come up with the final ratings. I'm not going to read each of these bullets. Board members, you have this for your review, but in fine arts, for example, I'll give an example for each of the areas. One of the things we looked at was the percent of students enrolled in fine arts classes. For health, wellness, and PE, we looked at immunization opportunity information that's offered to parents. Parenting community involvement, about how our district provides multiple opportunities for parent and community to engage in academic support for students. 21st century workforce, students participate in a selection of a pathway of study, and that could be anything from our special education students engaging in transition into the work, the workforce, or our career technical education students who are choosing a pathway, or all of our freshman students who are coming in and choosing their endorsement in the new House School 5 graduation planning system. Second, language acquisition, one of the things we looked at is offering English language courses that are offered to our parents, which we do. Our gifted and talented education program, we looked, one of the areas that we reviewed was how we evaluate our kindergarten students and make sure that all students have opportunity and access to be assessed for gifted and talented education. For dropout prevention, we looked at offering programs for family members to acquire English literacy skills, as well as developing academic, emotional, and social support. And then for compliance, that's the easy one, because we just had to say whether yes or not we complied with all the notices, federal requirements, the state requirements, and yes, we have met each of those indicators for compliance. There was a rubric applied, and so you see each individual score for each of the areas for the district, which resulted in 144 points out of 153. So our district is rated exemplary in community and student engagement. There is an opportunity on an annual basis for us to revisit the rubric and to determine what areas are important to us as a, as a community and what areas should be included and assessed as we move forward on an annual basis. Each of the campuses are also rated, and you see whether they were rated exemplary, recognized, or acceptable on each one of these subareas, each of the nine indicators. And then from that is derived a campus overall rating, and all of our campuses met the exemplary standard based upon their own rating and their own process with their individual community This information is reported as part of PIM's summer submission, and though I have spent a full year and a half explaining we no longer have exemplary, recognized, or acceptable ratings, we do for this. So we have standard and met, met standard and not met standard for the academic portions, but for the community and student engagement piece, we have the acceptable or not acceptable recognized. Any questions?
I got a quick question. On the GT program?
Yes.
Is the testing still the same for our elementary kids? Have they changed it up? I've had people ask me questions.
We do a kindergarten screener, and we do a second grade screener. So each of those, we use the COGAT, and we give that to all students in kindergarten and second grade. Students who meet a PEP score are invited to participate in additional assessments that we identify as a district, or parents or teachers may nominate students to be assessed. So those are the two entry points. And once you become gifted and talented, you stay gifted and talented. So we do not assess you again to find out later on if you're still too deep.
Okay, so the, but the parent can request it?
The parent may request it anytime, and they may request it.
That's from Cindy Mutha, who's sitting right over here. I'll send it up your direction.
That's correct.
And is that pretty, I mean, is that pretty standard across?
Yes, it is. A couple of years ago, I think it was to Cindy, we revised our system of identification for the kindergarten and second grade level because it was heavily reliant upon the teachers completing a portfolio with students. So there was a high degree of teacher bias, which resulted in a not incredibly diverse group of students proceeding into the GT program. So we moved to a universal screener so that all students would have an equitable opportunity to participate in the GT screener that is not based on a verbal indicator, so that students of all languages, all ethnicities, all backgrounds would have an equal opportunity and ethical access, and that has improved and increased diversity in our program. Thank you.
Dr. Porter?
Yes.
On the campus ratings, as I look at the digital learning environment, Chavez and Oak Point are just recognized as those exemplary, exemplary. Any indication of why there's that gap for those two campuses?
Since they rated themselves, they may have had data about their specific campus that they believed did not quite measure up to the exemplary, exemplary level. We provided the same rubric to all elementaries, and in the two secondaries had their same rubric. I can provide additional information about those two indicators for those two particular campuses, but since we're going to full-front books report the fifth grade next year, I'm assuming that that will create a commensurate assessment across the board. But those are not yet in hand, so that's probably part of the reason that you see a discrepancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Appreciate it. Next up, Human Resources update.
Sorry.
Good evening, Board President English and Board of Trustees. I have a brief update for y'all this evening, first starting with our vacancy report, which consists of just one slide that shows you which positions are currently open on our website and available to applicants. I'm not going to run through the list, but if you have any questions regarding any of these positions, please feel free to ask. This is pretty typical at this time of the school year to see this many vacancies. Actually, right now, compared to last year, we're probably in a better position as far as vacancies, but it is still summertime, people are still relocating, deciding to retire or transfer to other districts, but just an overview of what we currently have available. The second sheet that I have provided to you is a sheet that you are pretty familiar with. This is the sheet that you approve on a monthly basis for new hires. What is different this time is Mr. Williams, back in April, requested that we indicate on the confidential personnel sheet that yours- it does indicate on their, not their years of experience in Little Elm, but their overall years of experience in education. So that is indicated with both professional and paraprofessional employees. One thing I wanted to highlight with our new hires, we've been very busy hiring. We have hired, as of Friday, we hired 25 new teachers. That number has increased to 30 today. One of the great things that you will notice on the new hire section is of the 25 new teachers that we have to the district are only two that are zero-year teachers. So we have been able thus far to be able to successfully recruit experienced teachers to our district. That is something that very many districts struggle with, especially in this area where compensation is very competitive. There are many neighboring districts with very strong reputations as well. So the fact that we have been able to recruit that many experienced teachers, especially in critical needs areas, is very indicative of us moving in the right direction. So hopefully, we will continue with that momentum in attracting experienced teachers. Are there any questions regarding the personnel sheet?
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, communications update.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and folks from the community who are with us tonight. As you know, we have many vehicles and methods of communication that we use to engage our community, and we are preparing to roll out a brand-new initiative August 1st, and we wanted to share a few minutes with you tonight about Let's Talk and what that's going to entail.
Allowing every voice to be heard and acknowledged by everyone has an opinion about public education, their local schools, and you. And those opinions too often go viral, spreading misinformation throughout your district. K-12 Insights Let's Talk helps you control the conversation, transforming that widespread gossip into thoughtful, productive dialogue. Let's Talk resides directly on your website, accessible anytime, anywhere, on any device, allowing every voice to be heard and acknowledged by you and your specially-trained team. We know what you're thinking: This is way too much work, and I'll be buried in criticism. Not so. Just knowing you're there and ready to listen engenders immediate goodwill, leading to more supportive feedback and a relationship built on trust. Embrace today's right-now culture. Take control of the conversation, and show your community every voice counts. With K-12 Insights Let's Talk, your door is always open.
As you may recall, we have set up a Facebook page almost five years ago. We have a Twitter account as of three years ago. We have a very robust website, and we know that there is a digital conversation going on in our community. And this is going to be a container where we can bring all of those discussions into one area. We also have a constituent services forum that we initiated four years ago, and we will tie that into this. It will allow us to look topically, it will allow us to look at trends, and it will allow us to track the timeframe our staff takes to respond directly to constituents to address their concerns. So we believe that this is going to be a one-stop area that we can help manage and facilitate and enhance our communication with our constituents. So we'll be training our administrators in July at our administrative retreat, and we will be rolling it out for the new school year August 1st.
Let me understand this a little bit more. So is it its own communication platform, or is it connected to, say, instance, social media?
It connects all of the social media, Twitter, Facebook, emails, constituent services forum in one container.
Okay, so posts that potentially go to our Facebook pages are some will actually populate itself here?
Correct. So we can see if you have tweeted about something and emailed the superintendent about something, and make sure that we're getting you accurate information in a timely fashion.
And is that information, I guess, responsive communication? Is that a direct response communication, meaning that you'll send it out to, say, instance, I don't know, if it's the superintendent that has a response for it versus maybe one of the campuses? Is that how it operates?
Correct. Each campus and each department will have designated people to track responses. So for example, if there's a question about the website, that would directly come to me, but the superintendent and other super users in the district can see if that question is not answered within the 24-hour, you know, she will send us an email and say, hey, you need to address this because this is a hot topic. We see that it's the communications area on the website that needs to be fixed, but it's also the curriculum instruction area on the website, and those might be tied together. Whereas in the past, we have so many vehicles, and we don't, I mean, we have to all have a meeting to see the commonalities of the discussion. So I think this is going to help us be a little more efficient and more time-sensitive.
I think this is great, especially getting feedback from the community, listening to what they have to say, and directing that conversation to the right people and answer the questions.
Absolutely.
Or whatever the case is.
Right, and it's campus-level specific, it can be departmental-specific, and it can be topical. So for example, if it's a topic with transportation, Ms. Ingle would get that, but it might be transportation that has to do with fine arts trips on the van bus. Well, we would also need to involve the fine arts people, and they can collaborate and see each other's responses, and make sure that you're getting your answers here.
So no selfies on the bus, right?
No selfies.
So if they make a post there on Facebook, it goes to this, when the response is made, do whoever's making the response, do they go to Facebook and make the response, or does that respond at there and it automatically?
It will go back to the individual.
Okay.
But we can track and give you statistics. We can say, you know, Julie's War asked about this, this, and this, it took us five days to respond, here was her concern, and here's our answer.
Now, would that, is that just particularly into our Facebook page, our Twitter page, or is it extended further?
We can only control the conversations that happen on our page. We don't own the other pages. So that's part of it.
Or from a Twitter perspective, it's going to just look for hashtags in the LEISD and Little Elm?
Yes, sir. As soon as I said that, I knew.
Is this the vendor that we spoke to?
Yes. I believe you saw it in January, and I saw it at a conference in February, so we've been talking to them, planning this, but it's a new software, so we want to roll this out.
And it was very reasonable.
Yes.
Cost was very reasonable.
Very.
For all that we're going to get.
Yes.
But this is good, though, because now we'll be able to track that we're responding and.
Absolutely.
It's an offline platform, connected to social media, allows us to communicate, allows the community to participate in public commentary.
I know that you pointed your goals.
That is great.
How long do those questions and responses remain to the community?
Well, they're always in the software. It's that there's a timer now tracking the number of days and hours it takes us to respond. So we can pull reports on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, and you as board members or we as administrators can make sure our staff is responding in our allotted, our respective time.
We're not necessarily, just to make sure I'm clear, we're not going to respond to everything, meaning that if we get a hashtag Twitter post about something, we'll capture that, we'll have that for information, but they haven't come to us with a formal question or needing a formal response. So there's a lot of information we'll capture from this that just, we will see and be able to trend, you know, what's going well, what's not going well, so there's a lot of Twitter tags about Little Elm schools, lunches are bad, then we're going to know we've got a lunch problem.
Yes, sir.
Not everything's going to be required or responded or treated.
As we track it now, you know that Twitter has their own diagnostics, Facebook has their own diagnostics, our Facebook page, I mean, our webpage has its own diagnostics. We have our own constituent services forums. This is going to allow us to see the trends across all the platforms, because very rarely does someone just email us. They either email us and Facebook it, they email it, Facebook it, tweet it, you know, there's trends that we need to be aware of so we can address it efficiently, up front, and quickly.
I just didn't want everybody to think that we were responding to every piece of information that we got.
Right.
Just the formally ones.
The ones that require it.
Yes, correct.
But we'll be able to capture and track.
Right. And we'll be able to provide you this very good data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an operations update.
We're going to skip the budget workshop tonight and do that at a different night because that's going to entail a longer session.
Longer session.
And so now we're going to our construction report, safe access, press for Cim Academy. Mr. Reeves?
Thank you, Ms. Liedhart, President English, members of the board. For last meeting, you asked to provide an update on on our weather shelter areas. And so if we take a look at, some things I want to note is that the colony has, used a 2006 IBC, which is International Building Code. So as I go through this, I want you to realize it's not a traditional house that we're building. It's, there's a lot of other requirements. There's wind loads in this particular area that are based upon, you know, kinetic activity. There are lateral forces, there's even seismic, believe it or not, there's seismic activity within this area, not just in California. So there's a lot of things that we have to take into consideration. As you look at these pictures, we've already done that. We have steel and block construction. We also have a brick veneer and stone veneer. We have punched openings, so as I show you the Cim Academy from the outside, on the inside it's very open, but on the outside you'll see that there's punched openings, smaller openings compared to the mass of the building, if that makes sense. We also have areas of refuge that'll show highlighted, and Ms. War and I monitor the weather all the time, and so I probably get 20 of the same thing that says it's going to rain. So we go, okay, it's going to rain. So, but it's just good to keep track of that. So if we take a look at the facility, we just showed the first floor here, I shouldn't mention the head there. So the first floor here, and the reason why we just showed the first floor is because we usually try to get everybody from the second floor down to the first floor. And I show you these yellow areas represent those areas of refuge that we have weather shelters. And so we have restroom areas that are protected by a concrete wall and stone veneer wall and structural stairs. They have no windows within those as well. We also have interior areas of conference rooms and storage rooms that are areas that students and staff can enter into. We have locker rooms over in the gym area. Notice that the majority of those are not on exterior walls, except for these that are protected by that stairwell and that wall. And we also have administrative offices, and we have music areas. So you see that there's areas throughout the building that we created for areas of refuge. So let's take a look at some pictures. So here's what we're talking about on a structural slab. We have this on piers, and all piers are, are big tubes of concrete and steel that go down to something like rock that it bears on. And then on top of that, we have beams that are full of concrete and steel that are supported on these that aren't moving. And our slab is a two-way structural slab, which actually is suspended above the ground. Under void boxes, it's just cardboard, and those deteriorate, so if the ground moves up and down, it won't affect the slab. So I wanted to show, we start with a good foundation, like in ladder, with a good foundation. So here's kind of an area of, like those locker rooms and restrooms, notice that there are no windows at all, no very secure area. Here's that steel stair and concrete wall. Notice the structural steel framing that we have, and also the metal studs that we're using. No wood, no wood studs. Notice the mass of the building comparative to the punched openings. Okay, so it's relatively small compared to the mass. So even though you go in and it's open, the outside is protected. Here's another look of the gym area that is 12-inch, 11 and 5/8 or 12-inch block wall filled with concrete and steel, 18 inches on center each way. So notice that's a mat of concrete, so it's very structurally sound, and you have structural steel. Here's an area, it's maybe hard to see because the lights are still on, but this is an area within the gym that has all concrete block, which is CMU, and just one doorway, no windows. So the areas of refuge. And on that, that's just a quick synopsis of the areas. Any questions?
Let me ask, I think it's an obvious question. This isn't the Titanic, is it? Meaning that there is, are there enough refugee, refuge areas for all the students and teachers?
Yes, well.
Am I missing a couple lifeboats?
No, no, sir. And so now, will it be tight? Yes, sir. It'll be tight in certain areas, and so this is not the Titanic. I don't want to bring that up.
Now, are there more interior stairwells other than the ones on the outsides? I'm looking at the schematic. I know we have the one in the atrium area. I have no idea. I'm sorry.
There are other stairwells. There's the main learning stair that we have, and that's primarily the other stairwell that we have, the main one in the middle, but that's open.
Right, and that's what I was asking, are there ones that they could get through that would be more secure? Things happen suddenly and they're running downstairs, and kind of for me, I'm even thinking fire escapes.
Yes.
I see the one, the stair on the outsides of the building, but are there?
There's one here in the middle as well. And so the fire code requires us to have multiple means of egress.
Right.
And so we have those based upon the fire codes. And so this would be the primary stair, but there's also these other ones to get on. If there's a fire here, and you'd be able to get out.
Okay. But as far as, but if we have a tornado, they would go through the middle?
Yes.
They've got the atrium?
That is correct. Okay, other questions?
At this time, the board recessed to close session and conference room as permitted by the Texas Oklahoma Act, Code Subchapter 65.1.074, 65.1.072, 65.1.082, and 65.1.071. Time is 7:60. At 10:53, we're going to be in the regular meeting of the Little Elm Board of Trustees. Action item, discuss and approve level three employee grievance. It is now 10:53 PM on June 16th, 2014. The board did not take any action, any vote, or action in closed meeting. The board has heard the claims of Joseph Corley. Do I have a motion? Hearing no motion, the board takes no action. The last administrative decision stands as the final decision in this matter. Action item B, discuss and approve copier equipment.
As I was saying, the board has a recommendation relating to [inaudible]. Yes, right. I will. I'll wait. Thank you.
As I was stating, the district has been in a five-year contract for copier services, for copier equipment with our district. We entered into it five years ago. That contract will expire on August of 2014. The district went out for a request for proposal for copier services. We advertised it in the paper twice as were required by law. We opened those responses back on May 27th at 2:00. We had three companies that responded to our request for proposal. We reviewed the information that they submitted and their pricing and their equipment that they were going to provide. And then we went out on the DIR, which is the Department of Information Resources, a co-op site that we can utilize for this type of equipment, and went through their contracts. And we were actually able to design our copier equipment needs through the DIR at a cheaper rate and with less contingencies than any of the responses that we received. So the administration recommendation is that we reject all of the vids and goes directly through the DIR. We will be using 43 copiers. Currently, we have 46 copiers. And at this point, we're where we, at this point, probably have a print shop that we are going to discontinue because of the lack of use of that. So we were able to cut our copier needs down to 43 because we only, and the other need is, there's two at the print shop, and there's one that we do not need that will be at STEM. They only need two instead of three. And based on this negotiation, currently, this will save the district approximately $10,919 a month. Our current copier contract is about $29,230, and this one will go down to $18,455.
Per month?
Per month.
Per month.
Yes, that's per month. So savings annually of about $131,000. And with this particular proposal, we have unlimited volume in black and white, and we pay flat 5 cents per copy for color copies. So this is a really good deal, saves the district about $130,000 annually.
When is that effective?
It'll be effective in August. Yes, sir. And actually, the company that we're going in, we're recommending is Canon, and part of the previous provider's contract was that we had to box up the copiers and ship them back to the destination of their choosing, and that is included in this contract as well. And that is included in this contract as well. They will take care of all of that, getting them back to us. And this company was exceptional, so we had no contingencies there.
Any more comments? Questions? Call for a motion?
I move, we approve the 43 copier equipment agreement received from Canon Solutions through DIR Cooperative Contract.
Any more comments? Any questions? Any comments or questions? I did a question. How long is the contract for?
It's a 36-month.
36-month?
Yes, sir.
Three years, 36 months?
Guaranteed price of that.
Okay. Yeah, $300,000, but for three years?
Yes.
Have a motion now, a second? All of them favored? All disagree? Motion carries. Discussion on approval of litigation concerning Durham School Services LP versus Little Elm ISD?
I move to approve and authorize the board president to sign the attached settlement agreement in Durham School Services LP versus Little Elm Independent School District.
Motion carries now, here is a second? Any more comments? All those in favor? Disagree? Motion carries. Item D 6A will be postponed and moved forward? Discussion consider approval on survey vendor selection by HR?
I do want to give you additional information on the Gallup Engagement Measurement instrument that we are looking at for implementation next year. I will be consulting with, I will have a phone conference with one of the consultants tomorrow at 10:00 AM to get some additional information. In addition to being able to do some more research, I spoke to the Vice President of Talent with the Yes Prep. I'd actually seen her name out there in various, seen her at conferences, seen some of her publications and some of her video presentations, and so I had an opportunity to connect with her to get some additional information. I've used this in the past as a campus principal, but I wanted to get more of a talent development slash HR perspective on this tool. And what this tool does is assesses the level of engagement of our employees and serves as a very strong indicator of what our retention rate will look like if we implement this in the fall. And it says that we're about 85% engaged. That means we've really got to target that 15% that are not engaged. And so what I would like to get a little more understanding, if that is okay with you, before we do approve something that is this costly, because there is a quote in here for $15,850, but we would take off the $5,000 for the student piece because I think we still have a student survey that we can get for free. But I think where the focus is right now is on measuring the engagement of our employees. And this is a third-party survey. It is something that would be sent out by Gallup, not by Human Resources or the Curriculum Instruction Department. It would be sent out by them. They would then consult with the district to allow us to pinpoint the areas of concern using the data. I just feel like I want to get a little more, I think this is a good tool. I have used it in the past as a campus administrator, but I'd like to get a further understanding of it in the role of HR.
So you've used them before?
Yes, I have, and what I'd like to also see, and I've spoken to the consultant about, is possibly coming to us either in person or via webinar to provide additional information to answer some specific questions about the tool.
You developed the questions themselves?
The questions, they are just, it's 12 questions that are posed to employees. Am I valued? Am I able to provide feedback? There are 12 basic questions. You can find all kinds of information on this on the internet. In fact, you can actually use the questions yourself for free. They have them on their site that you can use. But again, you're not going to have that support to help you really disaggregate that data and dig deep. And again, I think one of the concerns is having a third party do it because we could take those questions and use them and implement them into our survey, but then that's something we're doing on our own.
Yeah, it's off microphone. They do have the consulting included. So we would be taking out the student piece, you said it's $5,000? So would that be...
$10,800.
Correct. That's an estimate of what it would cost us as a district, is about $10,000.
So are you saying you want to go get more information before we implement?
I'd like to get, I'd like to get a little bit, I'd like to get additional information.
Okay.
Possibly, what I'd like to see is a demo so that y'all could look at it, how it would look to our employees. Maybe look at some sample data that you'll be able to look at as well. For example, maybe a sample elementary school and kind of see how that data is going to look once it's populated.
Is this something that would be done once a year, twice a year?
It is typically done once a year around October. Some districts choose to do it twice a year, but then if you do it twice a year, you're paying, you're paying for that additional survey in the spring.
And then can you also segregate that so that the survey questions are pertinent to elementary versus middle school?
Yeah, they're going to be campus-specific.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate it. Discussion on access on transcripts, we'll move that forward. Discussion plan and action for posting employee handbooks online. Let's go ahead and move that action forward also. Did you have some discussion?
The employee handbook is on our webpage. It is available both in our local hub for our employees and it's also on our Human Resources page.
Is it available publicly?
It is available to the public. If you go to Human Resources and you go to, click on Employee Resources, the handbook is there.
Okay. Has it been up there for a while or...?
Yes.
Okay.
But if you're looking for a direct link, rather than clicking on Employee Resources, we can certainly do that in two minutes.
Yes. All right. Consent agenda items?
Does we need to pull for the correction?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Discussing approval changes to board BDAA law?
No, yeah, we just, we, we're going to go on it, I'm just going to, do we need to pull anything?
You wanted to pull K. K was the one she made the correction.
Oh, correction, okay.
Item K.
Okay, yes. Yep. So consent agenda items A and B, we voted on that last week with approvals, so let's pull those. Item C, discussing approval of region level and service count. Anything there?
Everything else you went over last week, I believe?
Yeah.
Oh, future agenda items?
Or for consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Call for motion for consent agenda items?
Devoting.
Devoting?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda with the amendments of pulling A, B, and K as submitted.
A second?
A second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, future agenda items? I'm sorry, K. Vote, sorry. Votes is definitely pulled.
We're trying to get out of here.
Okay. Okay, we have more?
All right. Just the copy that you're going to sign has the corrections, so just with a copy that.
Okay. Approve with corrections.
I move to approve as corrected.
Oh, I move to approve the regular board meeting minutes for 5/12/2014 as corrected?
A motion. Can I have a second?
Second. And then I have a question.
Okay.
What was changed?
Yeah, I put trustee Sally Coleman's name instead of Ms. Grex.
Understood. Okay.
Have a second? Do I have, all those in favor? Any opposed? Future agenda items?
Quick clarification on consent agenda, the fact that you pulled A and B. I'm looking at last...
We voted on them.
We voted on it.
Out of order.
I think you were.
Yeah. But we had already voted on them, so it's hopeful.
Okay. This is, I guess we just go down line. So we, future agenda items?
No, sir.
Speaking of any future agenda items? Sorry? Any future agenda items?
No, not at this moment.
Not this morning. All right, it's Florida. So my, any future agenda items?
I do, I'm not sure if it's an agenda item, but there was, Director Porter presented the update on the bullying.
Oh, yes.
My predecessor, Ms. Coleman, had actually asked for also a parent meeting regarding that in the, I want to say it was May 6th meeting. I wanted to see if there was an update on that. Is that something we can add for the next?
Yes.
That's a, some items are items that you need to approve on the agenda, but some are things you want to report on. So I think you wanted to report on...
Reporting on, reporting on.
Correct. Within the update. I just didn't catch it at the workshop as far as within the update, if there was any further movement on the parent meeting.
Okay.
And then I think there was, not ROTC, just kind of update on that one?
Yeah, that's right.
Update on ROTC?
We discussed it.
Yeah, we discussed it. We didn't make any decisions.
Yeah, we didn't make any decisions.
No, we just discussed it.
You just want to see where we are in the process.
See where we're at in the process.
Don't need to take action.
I just want to see where we're at.
You voted on something and approved it even though it wasn't on the agenda as a voting item?
No, it was on the agenda.
Well, it said to consider approval.
It's on the discussion items.
No, it was a mistake. We recognized that when we had already voted on it.
You can always, if there's a concern, you can always vote to ratify a previous decision if you want to just make sure it's no big deal.
That's fine.
All right, that. Any further board comments? No? Make a motion in a term?
I move to a term.
A second? A second, all in favor?